Kirby Kuna.
Jason Stenage.
Jeff Bulte.
Kevin Beano. And our meeting is being hosted by Marie, our zoning officer. Cynthia's here. Was that Marie? Okay, so this is a resumption of a public hearing we had last month. And Mr. Jezek is representing the people. Their name escapes me at the moment.
705 Washington Avenue LLC, one member LLC. And Mr. McWilliams, the principal, if you screen, the only other person in the picture is Mr. McWilliams. He is present with me this evening.
How you doing? Okay, so I'll just recap this and then we can start over. This arises from the zoning enforcement officer sending a letter to cease and desist to the property owners for using a portion of the land that's owned by the town. And Mr. Jezek.
What's going on, Mr. McWilliams?
We got sound from Marie?
I think so. Yeah, it's gone now. So this arises from, like I said, a cease and desist order given by our zoning enforcement officer that Mr. Jezek is representing 705 and restated his case again. And members asked some questions. If we could clear that up, that'd be nice, though.
Yeah, you can mute that, whatever.
I just private messa- I just messaged Marie. Does somebody have something on?
Nope.
I think it's coming from Marie.
Yeah, her mic's going up and down.
Okay.
All right, so let's, well, there we go. Mr. Jezek, could you please state your case again for the members?
Sure, I'd be happy to do that. Once again, my name is Attorney Scott. I represent 705 Washington and Mr. McWilliams is the principal member.
If I can interrupt you just for one second, I'm not doing my job. Could you raise your hand, please? Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth, hope you got it.
Coming to, yeah. Yeah, we're both raising our right hands.
So then you both need to state your names and your addresses, please.
I am Attorney Scott Jezek, 31 WF Palmer Road, in the Mudus section of East Adam.
Mark McWilliams, 58 Tamwoods Road, Oban, Connecticut.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Jezek.
Thank you. Mr. McWilliams' company, 705, has owned 1391 Riverside Avenue since the year 2017. That's when he took title to the property that is at issue here today. The adjacent property for which the cease and desist was issued by Ms. Dunn is the town's property, and it acquired its property in 2007. On Mr. McWilliams' property, I'm going to just refer to as his. In addition to the residence that's located along the street, Riverside Avenue, there is a garage located to the rear of the property. If any of you are familiar with that building, you can see that it's not of recent vintage. You can also see that the sole access and really only available access to that is across the driveway that is at issue, that which crosses the town of Thompson's adjacent property. I wanted to take this maybe best in a timeline. And what I'd really like to do is go back to the earliest point, I think, that's relevant to what we're discussing today. And that is 1956. And the reason I select that year is that your town maintains, as many of the community did back then, aerial assessor's maps that provide an airplane shot usually in late March or April of every, any given year. The town of Thompson's maps were shot in 1956. And then you have superimposed over the actual features in the field, the boundaries of the property. And why that 1956 map is so important is that it illustrates both of our properties. That is, the town of Thompson's and my client's property. And the configuration of those, that is, the boundaries of those properties in 1956 are identical to the boundaries that those properties enjoy today and in 2020. Furthermore, garage and residence on my client's property and the driveway to that garage are both visible on that 1956 aerial map. Now, I did include in the package that we, I'm just going to hold this up so you have some general idea of what document in your package I'm talking about. It's a great quality shot, but it does illustrate the properties that are involved with this. And if, looking at it from what I consider the bottom in this fashion, in the lower left, you would find maybe halfway up the page, two properties that are issue, at issue. Lot number three, which is my client's, and lot number two, which is the town's. If you have the opportunity to look at the original map that's on file with your town assessor, you would see clearly that the structures that I'm talking about are still in place. And you'd see the driveway crossing over the town's property. So that takes us at a starting point in 1956. We maintain that nothing changed since that time, all the way to the present. But interestingly, in 1973, the next critical date, the town of Thompson adopted its zoning regulations for obtaining a building permit would have required a certificate of zoning compliance. And with respect to my client's property, there has never been a permit for construction taken out on that property, which would suggest that any structures that are at issue in existence here today have been there prior to 1973. So then you take that same time period from 1973 to the year 2007, when the town acquired its property. We know that as of 1956, the structures complained of, the driveway were in place. And we know that no construction, new construction at least, took place from 1973 to 2007. And anywhere you measure in between, there was more than 15 consecutive years of using this driveway to occupy a garage that was in existence at that time. Now, I know you received a letter from your town council, and it essentially confirmed my statements with respect to the law. And that is, at the time, the town of Thompson took to its property in 2007, if there was an easement in existence, it took subject to that easement. And similarly, when my client took title to his property in 2017, if that easement was in place, he enjoyed the benefit of that easement. The mere fact that the town is an owner of that property would not have in any way extinguished the easement if it had existed at that time. Now, the question is, do we have the 15 consecutive years? Well, what evidence we have is first that buildings were all in place in 1956. Similarly, we know nothing changed to alter that since 1973. There's no record on the land records within the town of Thompson that I could find, and I would suggest that none exists, to suggest that anyone filed a claim, a notice of opposition, a statement in opposition, an affidavit affecting title to dispute this right of way. We are not aware of anyone who has ever made a claim, ever put a fence up, a barricade, any obstruction. The first time my client learned that there was an issue with respect to this was when we received the letter from the zoning enforcement officer. And frankly, we bared on the side of caution when we appealed that notice because it wasn't abundantly clear whether it was intended to challenge our use or was some other way looking to manage it. But under these circumstances, in order to protect our easement, because it is the only access, we filed the appeal that is before you tonight. I would like to ask Mr. McWilliams, who's here, just a couple of brief questions, if that's okay with the board.
It's okay with me, if it's okay with the other members, sure.
Mr. McWilliams, since 2017, when you took title to that property, has anyone come forward and objected to your use of that right of way, accepting this letter from the town of Thompson?
No.
Has anyone ever barricaded or caused any obstruction to that driveway?
No.
Do people occupy that property? So you don't live there yourself?
No.
Are you, and I'm just going to ask you in one global sense, as far as you're concerned, that's the only and the sole access to that property?
Yes.
I don't have any other information to offer. We're not aware of any evidence to suggest that there isn't anything but an easement that was probably established sometime in the early 1970s, frankly, before the town even adopted a zoning, and has run continually since that time for a period really in excess of 50 years at this time.
Why do you think it is that over this, what, 50-year period or whatever it is, that in multiple owners, that this has never come up before?
I really don't, I don't know the answer to that. I do a lot of land use work, and I'm not certain that all instances like this are raised. It's only when someone takes objection or makes exception that these issues come up. I can explain what happened here.
I, it's just, I'm not a land attorney, but I thought generally speaking, that banks wanted A2 surveys and access points, that's why I'm asking the question.
Well, the day of, the day of A2 surveys is probably long past. What is typically done now is a seller provides what's called a seller's affidavit. And they are supposed to disclose on these affidavits whether there are any exceptions to title. And one of the items that's considered an exception to title would be the kind of circumstance we have here. A driveway crossing an adjacent property to access the one that's in question. So yes, it's a legitimate question. I don't know why, any more than I know why when the town took title, that issue wasn't addressed. It's evidently been in place for more than a decade with the town of Thompson, and it has not been raised until just recently.
But it's now asserting it's, what it thinks is its legal right over that property, though. It hasn't been 14 years since the town has owned it, correct?
That is correct, but frankly, if you read your council's letter, the 15 years, once it ran from 1956, 15 years forward to, say, 1971, the easement's there. And you can't, you can't later extinguish it. It's in existence, and you take subject to it. That is the law, and that part of the law is very clear.
Isn't it illegal in Thompson to have a shared driveway? And now we're talking about a shared driveway on a property. I think our zoning does not allow for shared driveway.
Well, that's why I make the point, sir, that the driveway we're talking about here predates your zoning by almost 20 years. So it's prior existing nonconforming use.
Well, that was a machine shop that was there for about 80 years before it got closed up. I'm going to say approximately 20 years ago. You can still see the outline of it in your map.
Is that on the town's property or the?
On the town's property. You can actually see that big rectangle right underneath that driveway. It was a big machine shop, was there for years and years and years.
Yeah, let me be clear. So we're not claiming that our use of the driveway is necessarily exclusive. We're just claiming an easement. We're not claiming adverse possession, that we own it. We're only claiming the right for ingress and egress through the property.
I did a fair amount of reading over the last few days about these easements. And it's my opinion that one of the tenements of this is that it has to be used without permission. And I suspect that over that period of time, there was permission, and that's why it was used. That's my personal opinion. I know Al Stack, who used to run the machine shop. And I seriously doubt that you would go through his property without his permission, but.
Well, I would say respond.
That's my opinion.
If that's a question, I'm sorry to interrupt. If I were to.
So it's a statement.
Okay, well, I'm going to respond with a statement. And that is, the gentleman who you described could have been here tonight, could have been subpoenaed by somebody who knew him or knew.
Not likely. Not likely, he's dead.
Oh. I guess that's just.
So how do you, how do you prove that this was done adversely, then? I can't prove that there's permission. You can't prove that there was that adverse use of property.
Once again, if you read the memo submitted by your council, one of the things he said that you could consider was photographic evidence. And that's the reason that I.
That's one of four tenements, though. That's one.
Yes, it is, but that's compelling evidence in this case that the issue that we're talking about is not something of recent vintage that has been in existence for decades. The second is the unrevenue of my client. And you can also give consideration to the fact that none of the parties noticed, nobody out in the public who read the public notice of this saw fit to come forward and raise any issue about it either. Frankly, other than the statement you just made, which is certainly within the parameters of the hearing, though, there's no evidence to suggest anything but the fact that we've used this, my client has used this, excuse me.
I'm not disputing that. I'm not disputing it used it. What I'm saying is that I think that you must have had permission to use it. And that negates the whole prescriptive easement definition. If you can't, if you're not using it hostilely, it's not a prescriptive easement. You're doing it with permission.
I don't disagree. Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with him. But where's the evidence that there was permission?
Where's the evidence there wasn't?
The fact that it's been in existence, open and used, as cars.
That doesn't cut it with me.
Well, it may not, but that is what is considered hostile use.
Okay. Any other questions from the members?
I'd be willing to bet that Al Stack knew exactly what was happening behind this building. Al Stack knew a lot what was going on in this town.
I think I agree with Kevin, that the use had to be definitely with permission.
And I, well, anyway, any other questions from the members, and we can close this out? Jeff?
I'm good.
Kirby?
No, I'm good.
Okay, can you make a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, may I just say one last thing?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. If anyone is going to rely on the fact that the use must have been permissive, I would just ask that whichever members you are, if you would define when that occurred, who gave the permission and the particulars, so that we have that for the record, because this is a critical issue.
I don't think it's up to us to prove your case, sir.
Well, we're saying there was none. We've recited our evidence, but I did not raise the issue of permission. It was raised by you and at least one or two other members. And I'm just saying, if you have evidence of it, please state it for the record beyond just spec.
I told you, it's my opinion.
I understand. I heard you.
I told you, it's my opinion.
I heard you.
And I had facts.
I'm sorry.
I lived in this town my whole life. But anyway, any other questions, members?
I have none.
No.
No.
Need a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
On favor? Aye.
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 All right, this is the time, if there's anybody else in the audience that would like to speak on behalf of this or against it, now's your time to speak. Does anybody here? Okay, I shouldn't have closed the public hearing. I got a little ahead of myself, but we're closed. Okay, gentlemen, discussion? Can we have Cindy's input? Hello, Cindy.
Ms. Dunn?
She's on mute right now.
Okay, no, I unmuted. My dog was barking, making noise, so. No, I don't have an opinion on it. I just based, based on what each attorney wrote in their memorandums. And, you know, they have been using it for, since 1953. But can you prove whether they're using it with permission or not? So no, I don't really have anything more to say on it.
I mean, I think they're trying to put us in the position of being the court system here. And we're not a court of law, first of all. I'm just using my common sense here. It just seems to me that nobody would, that owned that property, being with the proximity that it was, that was going to happen without their permission. I just, I just have a hard time buying that. And I think the town is exercising its right within the 14 years to make sure that their rights are protected. And if it was a personal property owner, it would be the same thing. They have, they have the courts to deal with if they don't like our decision. That's my opinion.
Kevin, I think I have one statement. I think we should allow continued use for the extent of the amount of time that the town owns it. But should the town decide to sell that property, then it'd be up to the new, obviously, the new buyers or owners of the property that it's going to change. They can't, we can't grant further use after that point because we don't have any way to control that.
I'm not, I'm not sure. Well, I think, I think at hand here is not really a deal making with them. It's we have to either decide whether we're going to uphold this CEO's cease and desist or not. I mean, they could, they have it within their ability to talk to each other, make a deal, the town and them. I mean, that's.
Right.
I mean, I don't think we should be in the position of making a deal. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I mean.
No, I agree with you. We get, we get.
They can make that, they can make that deal, and all the town has to do is give them written permission to use it. And that makes any challenge of a prescriptive easement go away. Or at least that's what I read. And I read quite a bit about this stuff. It's very close to the, what's the other one?
Adverse possession.
But adverse possession, correct. It doesn't give them a legal right, it just gives them a right. But it's, to me, it's very murky. We don't, we don't have any kind of surveys to outline where this easement would be. I mean, we see from an aerial photograph, but I, I don't know.
I'm just looking at the application for my pictures that I sent. If you want it, it's not going to show up. Kidding me. I guess I have them here, wait a minute. You did get pictures in your packet, right?
Mm-hmm.
Did you get pictures and maps and stuff?
Yep.
Well, for some reason, I don't have it here in my folder, but there was a satellite view in the packet. I know it's online because I was looking at it earlier, what was posted online. But it's not here. So did you take a look at the satellite view to answer your question, Kevin?
Well, I don't, the satellite view wasn't really my question, really. I mean, my question is whether they had permission to use it. And that I think they did. I mean, the business of the aerial map and where the location of it is is just another issue that I don't know how you resolve without an A2 survey or somebody delineating exactly where they're supposed to go on that property. So for those reasons, I'm, I'm in favor of the cease and desist order and think that they should just pursue it either by making some kind of arrangement with the town, or if they want to pursue the legal avenue, then that's up to them, too. But that's just my opinion. Everybody has their own opinion.
Can I add something? Yeah. Could you let, miss?
No, I'm sorry, the public hearing is closed, sir. So any other comments from the members?
I have none.
Okay, then let's take a vote. And a yes vote is to uphold the zoning enforcement officer's cease and desist. And a no vote would be to not uphold it. So we'll start off, Kirby Kuna?
I vote yes, so let's let the cease and desist stand.
Jeff Bulte, please.
Yes.
Yes, let us stand?
Yes.
Jason Stenage?
Yeah, I vote yes.
And Kevin Beano, I also vote yes. Sorry, Mr. Jezek, didn't go your way, but you have other opportunities to pursue.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda is the approval of the regular ZB A minutes. Like, get a motion?
Make a motion where you approve the minutes for last meeting?
I second the moment, the motion, I second the minutes for the last meeting.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All members, all members said aye. Correspondence, we have the P and Z minutes from May 26th, if anybody has a comment. We also have the budget report, if there's any comments. Applications and appeals?
None.
None of, none received after the agenda posted. Old business, P and Z zoning review commission, I think Cynthia's going to speak on that.
Yeah, you know, I thought that I had sent a memo to Gloria to send to you, to the members. And then I went quickly online before I got here. And I realized if I did send it to her, I sent her May's memo. But there was really nothing in the memo, with the exception that the Planning and Zoning Commission had a special Zoom meeting last Tuesday. And we went over probably up to about article, almost up to the zoning districts. We were a few pages short of that. And Terry did a really good job on putting everybody's comments in there. And then some comments need to be discussed. They were just, they were practical comments, and there was change. Some comments were discussed. And the biggest issue was, well, there were two big issues in that one. One was the organization of a simple zoning permit up to what is required for a site plan approval by P and Z and a special permit by P and Z. It was very convoluted, it was not clear. And so this morning, Donna Hall from the building office, Tara, and two members from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I met. Did I say seven o'clock this morning, guys? At seven o'clock this morning? And we went through how to make this process simple and understanding. And Tara rewrote it, and we will be discussing that tomorrow night at our next meeting. The other bone of contention, which, you know, I'd kind of like to have your opinion on it. They did take a vote on it, but it was, the vote was skewed. Nobody was really clear, so we have to redo this particular subject. Everybody on the zoning, Planning and Zoning Commission, well, not everybody. Many people do not want to require a zoning permit for a structure under 200 square feet. It would be 200 square feet to change. Right now, it's 140 square feet. And let me do this clearly, I'm sorry. Okay, right now, to build a shed, if it's under 140 square feet, you can be six, in six feet away from your setback. If you're over 140, you have to follow the dimensions of your zone, which most zones, you know, some are 25 and some are 12. Anything under 200 square feet, you don't need a building permit for. So what we decided to do in the zoning regs is to increase that six-foot setback up to 200 square feet to be consistent with the building regulation. That they don't want people to have to come for a zoning permit for it. Right now, regardless of your square foot of accessory building, you have to come for a building, a zoning permit.
Cindy?
And the commission members don't want to have people have to pay for that zoning permit. I was very firm about my decision is that if you don't, then you're going to have more issues on complaints of people just building shed after shed after shed.
Cindy, can I interrupt you for one second?
What?
Can I interrupt you for one moment?
Sure.
If if they don't get permits, how do they tax them?
That's, that's a good question. I didn't even bring that one up. That's interesting. So, I can ask that tomorrow night.
I mean, if you don't know what's going up, then you're going to have to wait for a revale every time to
Right.
to pick up on these things.
Right.
Which costs the town money.
Right. Um, that is going to be brought up again tomorrow, because the vote, like I said, I don't think they knew the way the the motion was worded. I don't think they knew what their yes or their no vote meant. Um, and I think after the meeting with Donna this morning, I think we're looking for to put that back in, that they do have to have a zoning permit for it.
Ten, that's ten by twenty. That's a pretty good-sized building.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, the area that I'm most afraid, most afraid of for our town and for the people who live in the area is actually the lake area. If you don't require that permit, then you're not going to know if they're within the setback they're supposed to be, and then they'll have one shed, and they'll, oh, I need another shed, so I'm going to build another one. And, you know, some of those lots are pretty tiny up there. So, those are the two big issues this time. And again, tomorrow night, we'll be meeting and going, you know, going further into finishing up the part of the administration and then going into the districts, which is going to be fun and games. And, yeah, that's it. So, that's it on the zoning regs. And the other issue that I brought up in my memo was Bates Auto, and somebody had asked me why I was letting the Z B A know about the Bates Auto, and I just, I thought that I should let you know, because it's the Z B A that approves the motor vehicle, um, you know, businesses in our town, so that's why I'm letting you know what's going on up there.
But that's done, right?
Huh?
They're done, right?
Well, oh, yeah, they're finished. Yeah.
I I heard the other day that the the ownership of that property was not even in the Bates name.
Oh, yeah, it's in Bates name.
And neither was the license, I heard, either.
No, I don't.
It's still played out there, right?
No, because the last, because the permit I had, the last license of renewal was in Bates name.
Okay.
So, you might be thinking that Doug is going up there, and from Woodstock, Doug Wilton is taking, taking.
Yeah, like, I know I was aware of that, yeah, taking stuff off the property, yeah.
So, so what I did, I, you know, I was out in that area, and I said, I'm going to stop by to make sure that nothing's going on. So, the gentleman named Steve was out there, and he's the one that I had originally given the notice to, that I had wanted someone to call me. I gave him my business card, and this was months ago, and that's when Doug Wilton came into the picture. And he was out there, and I asked him, I said, are you sure you're not doing any business? He says, no, he says, we're not doing anything. He says, I am just here, because people keep driving in and telling me, you know, and I have to tell them that we're not doing any more business. And he's, and I said, well, do you know what's going on with it? And he says, he has not been told one single thing. So, the second part of that conversation is there's a trailer on the property, and I said, well, what's that trailer there for? I, and I asked him, I says, are you living in it? And he says, yeah, I am. I said, well, you know, you're not supposed to be living in a trailer. And he did say, in a few weeks, he was going to get out of there. And I said, well, you know, I'm going to wait a few weeks before I drive by and let's see what's going on. But even if I do send a violation letter to, who do I send it to? Except the kids who who inherited, you know, obviously, the property, but.
A prize.
So, but he was very nice, you know, there was no, there was a very good conversation and but but Doug has taken a few more things off across the street, but man, there's a long way to go. So. So, that's, that's about the news I have.
All right, maybe this should have been on old business, but we'll do it on the new business. We had two recent departures from the board, Tom, which I believe we have a resignation. And did we get a resignation from Jared, Cynthia?
No, he just told me on the phone. Well, he said he had called.
I I reached out to him and sent him an email, and he said that he would send me that letter of resignation, but I I haven't got it yet.
No, no, we haven't received it, no.
Okay, so, just as a matter of house cleaning here, normally, what should have happened was when those seats were vacant, when Tom's resignation was given, the board should have voted to move one of the alternates into a full-time position.
Yeah, we did that, Kevin, I'm sorry.
We didn't vote.
Ken Weiss was moved into that position.
Yeah, but we never voted on it, Jason. It was supposed to come through our board, that's my point.
I don't know if it had to be voted on. I think it was, it was filled by the Republican committee, wasn't it?
It has to be voted on by our committee. That's, that's, that's the bylaws. Now, he would have been voted anyway, because, well, I say anyway. Generally speaking, we've always put a Republican back into a Republican position and a Democrat into a Democratic position, just out of courtesy. So, because there was no other Republicans, he would have been moved into that position. So, it it's almost a moot point, so, but if everybody's fine with that, I'm good with it, you know? Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Next thing is, we we need to fill that position that Tom vacated, and I don't know if anybody else has any recommendations, but Ross Dimmick had been on the board with us once before, and he was a pretty good member. And I would make that recommendation to the selectmen and to the Republican Town Committee to fill Tom's position, if anybody would second that.
I'll second that, Kevin.
Thanks, Kirby.
We also, I'm sorry, we also have Earl Rosebrook, who was thought about as a possible alternate member.
Okay, well, we can get Jared's, I'll second the motion to fill Jared's position, once we get his letter of resignation with, what's what's his name, sir? Jason?
Earl Rosebrook.
So, we need to move this down to the selectman, for selectman's office, and let him know that we have these vacancies, but we first have to get a letter of resignation from Jared. Then we can propose Earl be put on the board, and I I can reach out to Jared again, and see if I can get that letter. Any other comments?
Not on that, no.
Um, anything else?
What did, what became of Jared?
He's moving out of the area, he told me. He didn't tell me where, but he said he's moving out of the area, not just a few miles away.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
If there's no other business, if somebody would move for adjournment?
I'll make a motion, we adjourn the meeting.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, approved. Anybody opposed?
No. Cindy, can you hang on for a minute? When the meeting's over, I'd like to talk to you for a second.
Sure.
Cindy?
Yes.
Okay, are we done, the meeting? Meeting's over? I can speak?
Meeting's adjourned.
Uh, it's still on record. It's still recording. I can't, I can't unhook the recording. I, Marie said that she it's still recording.
Well, I only had a question anyway. Really, whatever.
Okay.
Want to know what, why do we have a used car lot in the, in the Legion parking lot all of a sudden?
On the where?
In the American Legion parking lot. Why is that a used car lot all of a sudden?
I did notice that, too.
Yeah, you get cars up for sale in that lot. They moved them off the lawn next door, and now they're in the Legion parking lot.
Is the American Legion on Route two hundred?
Yep.
Wow. Okay.
Leslie?
Hi.
You're late. Hi, Leslie.
And another thing, Cindy, uh, there's a pretty significant-sized junkyard right behind the town transfer station. I don't know if you ever, you cannot see it from the road or anywhere else, but.
Is that off, is that off Riverside Drive?
It's on Passay Road, right behind the dump, if you throw, uh.
I don't know where, I don't know where the transfer station is. That's the one place I don't know, in Putnam, I mean, in Thompson, where the transfer station is.
It's on, it's on Passay Road. And if you went by, if you went by the transfer station, the first driveway on the right, and find a way in there, you'd find a pretty significant junkyard happening in that.
Actually, a functioning junkyard, Kirby?
I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff in there, coming and going.
Coming and going.
Yeah.
Oh, my God. Okay, thank you. All right, I got to write those two down, sorry.
Something else for you to do, Cynthia?
Oh, yeah. All right, so you're saying, American Legion?
Yeah. That's a used car lot, no?
And then uh, by the transfer station?
Yeah, behind the, yeah, behind the transfer station.
And that's off of Passay Road?
Passay Road, yeah.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Kevin, can I ask you a question?
Go ahead.
Um, who are you proposing to install for Tom's resignation?
It was our recommendation, Ross Dimmick.
What was the name again?
Uh, Ross Dimmick.
Want to spell it?
Yeah.
D, it's Ross, R O S S, and his last name is Dimmick, D I M O C K.
Okay.
And Kevin, if I could, I think that Ken had already been filled in Tom's position. He's already been sworn in as that seat. The alternate, the person that we're looking for is to fill Jared's seat.
No, to fill, I'm sorry, to fill Ken's seat. You're absolutely right. Not to fill, you're absolutely right. It's my error. The recommendation is to fill Ken's seat.
No, no, Ken is, yeah, Ken is.
Ken has moved up.
Correct, yes, yes.
Ken was an alternate.
Yes.
Okay.
We have to fill Jared's seat also.
Jared's seat is available as soon as we get his letter of resignation, and that was the, then we were going to recommend Earl, what was his last name again?
Rose.
Roseburg?
Rosebrook.
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 Yeah, I'm sorry, Gloria, if you can make that typo error, we were recommending Ross to fill the vacancy created by Ken as an alternate, because he is now a regular member.
So, Ross is now an alternate.
Well, we're recommending that he be put in that position, and we're also recommending that Earl Rosebrook be put on the board to replace Jared.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
What happened, Leslie? You forget about us?
Oh, not at all. Um, needed to update, uh,
Zoom.
the Zoom update.
Ah.
Yeah.
You weren't updated?
Not at all. How, how, how were the rulings for the, for the public, I mean, for thirteen ninety-five, thirteen ninety-one? What happened there?
We voted to uphold the zoning enforcement officers' cease and desist.
Oh, you did?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
For me, it was me, I I did a lot of reading on this presumptive easement.
Right.
If, it, one of the tenements that he would not, he he didn't want to touch was the permission part. And I just don't think that those people were using all that property all those years without their permission. I just, I just, I just find it inconceivable that all those years went by and they, they, they did not have permission to use it. I just don't, I ain't buying that, but that's, that's how I felt about it, and I, so we voted, we voted to uphold our decision.
Okay. Very good. And how about the Pompeo Road?
That was last meeting.
That was last month.
Right.
That was approved.
Granted.
Yeah.
They were, it was approved, yeah.
Yeah, that was approved.
Yeah. Okay.
Very good.
All right, any other complaints, anybody? Not complaints, but any other thing you want me to look into?
We'll see if we can find something for you.
Oh, thanks. Oh, wow. That's so interesting. Okay, I'm done.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Thanks, Marie, for hosting our meeting. Uh, Jason, Kirby, Jeff, Cynthia, Leslie, have a good night. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right, see you, guys.
Bye.